What I propose initially to the organizers is an event, a daily event, that we could schedule at some moment of the day and have the IATN people together. What I propose is first a very quick roundtable, so that everybody knows who is everybody. So if you can please introduce yourself and just say in a few words what's your involvement in IATN in Debian, or outside Debian, whatever you want. First talk with Eddy.
Hi, my name is Eddy Petryshova. I've been involved in Debian for three years, which of those, all of them related to IATN. Lately, I have been doing other stuff. I've been involved in localization in Romania and recently I've started working on things like improving the IATN infrastructure. I just created some first version of scripts which create some companions for the translations for all languages and these kind of things, just trying to make things better for, especially for us Romanians. We don't care about the others.
Okay, so you won't speak anymore?
Hi, I'm Cesar. I work for the regional government of Extremadura and I do localization in Spanish. I have been also organizing the Debian work sessions of Extremadura last year. And we have also a server that we will maybe use in the future.
We are all in Romania. Suro.
And we are hosting it in Extremadura too.
Ronda?
Hello, my name is Gephit Fuchs. People had known me as Arce or more recently as Ronda. I'm working on a German translation team, or rather I worked quite lots. When I got in Mod of Debian, there wasn't really a team around. The website was mainly neglected, so I translated quite a lot of stuff and did lots of stuff in that case. I also got involved a bit into upstream translation of some packages. We have a brother, he has the team, the German translation part, which works quite well. So I took more or less a step back and it doesn't mean that I'm not interested in translation anymore. I'm just wanting to find a new spot for me in that area.
We will.
So I'm rather liking to work on internationalization issues more than on localization with translation work.
My name is Leo Kaplan. I'm from Israel and I work on Hebrew support. I remember the Debian Hebrew team and we work mainly on packaging Hebrew-related stuff and not on translation. About a year ago, also started a Debian Arabic group to fix also their problems, especially packages like fonts and A spell, board lists and stuff which they didn't have. And there are a few other languages which ask to be on that group, like Farsi for Iran and Kurdish, and languages which are similar to Arabic. And I hope to have a few other languages here.
Hi everyone, my name is Yuelen. Three reasons why I was here. First one is because I sometimes, apart from my academic work, I collect news for the Linux magazine. And obviously, IATN and various different institutions are my sources for my job. So I come here to do something working and so if you have any job and you like to have some publicity for your work, then I can put it in the Linux magazine. And secondly, it's about my own interest because I was from Taiwan and I was using Debian and now Ubuntu. And the font and the different translation for the Taiwanese version of Linux is very problematic. And sometimes it's even very political as well. It's not just technical things. So I'm here to hear about how these fonts and how standards are made and how can we improve that and maybe report to my friends in Taiwan who unfortunately can't be here because of their job and various reasons. And the third reason is because my academic job, I do work for, to look at the development process and particularly user issues and requirement analysis. And so I thought I come here to do some real work and just to understand how people discuss things and how actually participatory design and user-oriented design can be put together.
Alright, so I'm Nicholas Palenger and I'm here because I've been looking on the IATN mailing list for a little while. I'm very interested in seeing how fonts can interact and serve the needs of internationalization and localization in Debian and other projects. And I'm involved with the fonts team in Elliot. I'm a volunteer for SL International and we do things around fonts and input methods and writing systems. I'm also a member of the Open Font Library. There will be a talk later on on open fonts and what's happening there and where we can go and where things can go. Also, we're really hoping we have a good collaboration with other teams so that more locales can be activated in the installer, that more translations can work on other locales. That's my stuff.
Hi, I'm Daniel Glassi. Yes, I have a package library called Graphite that will help for displaying how the scripts of minority languages. Yeah, and I also hope to turn over the trust on IATN.
Felipe? Well, I'm Felipe on IRC this fall. I've been involved in Debian since 2002, especially with translation 2004. I'm coordinator of the Brazilian Portuguese Translate 13. And I've been the part of the IATN admin team for the server that's Extremadura delayed for us. I'm also working on a little tryings to merge DDP inside Puto and other stuff inside Puto. And that's mainly with translations.
I'm Luciano and I'm just another Debian package.
Just another.
Hi, I'm Cyril Broubois. I play TV, that would be easier. I started being involved in Debian by translating and mostly reviewing translation for the French team, but I then moved to packaging, graphic related stuff and then games. And we've spoken a bit with Sabo Swa and Mary Ann Grace about problematic stuff in games, like translation only available through images and the lack of maybe unified or standard way to get translation in the Windows world where games author are developing their games. And I'm looking for solution for usable standard for Windows user. Maybe something different than GetText or two-way translating tool or something like that.
You go too.
I'm Steve Longeshek. I'm the guy who can't file a translation on his packages without him looking it over and trying to correct it for you. My involvement with internationalization has been somewhat limited, but I have some specific pet peeves that I want to try to take care of this week and so I'm looking forward to working with people on those.
Hello, I'm Rauli. I am Spanish. Well, Spanish is better. I am, I have been involved in local user group, Spanish, Burma and others. I am in the directive of three organizations like this, Burma, Palermo, and Good. In Debian, I have been working for two years in packaging business, managing software, accounting on Debian, BurmaGes. And I have little stuff, and translation, I have made little translation for Debian.
I'm Luke and I'm a release manager now. I translated a lot of packages and webpages in Kujash, but I stepped back as translator actually and more coordinating IATN efforts in the release of Debian. I'm also a member of the admin team of the server.
Okay, I'm Grisu, a German guy and I start for some years the translation of the Debian package description. Now we have a new app in Zit and I hope running the next release. And I hope also we can put also stuff to Puto. I think it's one thing that we should discuss this week in DEPCOT, because I think it's not.
So I'm Nicolas Francois or Necral on IRC. I'm maintaining some internationalization-related packages like Podaprong for Po4A and Puto. And I'm also translating and reviewing translation for the French team.
And you're currently dominating the world. Wow. Okay, thanks. Well, it was important, I think, to be sure that everybody knows each other.
You miss yourself, I think.
Uh, yes. Okay, well. I'm Christian Perrier. How to pronounce it in English, by the way. Just like Sam Osvar also in the beginning. So I'm not meant to be a TPR someday. Well, my main interest in Debian is obviously internationalization, localization, because this is the only thing I can do. So this is why I'm in this stuff, because someone said a few hours ago, I have no programming skills. I suck at administering machines, so the only thing I can do is take an English string and put it into French. So...
You have to be able to program the maintain packages, isn't it?
Yeah. This is why I, for instance, maintain a lot of packages, not related at all with localization such as Samba, but I have some backup there. Well, my main point in all this stuff is to try to, as we say in French, faire prendre la une des, to have all things work together and as the word, a common goal. If I can summarize last year's DEPCOT, we already had a few IATN sessions. The main conclusion was to decide to try building a common infrastructure. Everybody knows that Ubuntu has Rosetta. This is a quite good tool in its objectives. We all more or less agree that it has drawbacks when it comes at localization, especially around quality assurance and the like. So the idea was to build our own infrastructure in Debian instead of the various hacks we have all around to gather material available for translators. One of the challenge we have is to make this material available for potentially new translators. Around this table, we are many, many skilled people. We can gather things from the SBN for whatever place it can be. That's okay for us. But if we want to extend this to more languages, more cultures, we need to make things simple. And that was the point. And we finally decided to go on with Puto because of the good support of the Workforge people and also because we can't go with Rosetta because Rosetta is non-free. Okay. Since then, we had this Extremadura meeting, thanks to Cesar and all the Extremadura region people. And it gathered us, we did set up a server, so it's working now. And since then, it did nothing. We did nothing with this tool. That's one of the challenge we have, is try to do something more with the server, or at least with Puto. Actually, the server does a lot of work that many people do not notice. The material now you find in the Debian website is available because of script run on this server, because of the work of Tomai Yo-Yo, who is not here currently, because of the work of Felipe or Nicolas, some little bit ID also. And we have to do more with this thing. Grisu mentioned the package description translation. This is a huge challenge, huge amount of translation. The current system doesn't scale very well with load of work. So one of the challenge we have and hopefully this week is to try to import the material in Puto and the like. There are technical challenges, so we have some technical sessions to have. Another challenge we have is to give our beloved release managers some good release goals for Lenny, for IATN of course. Nicolas sent this morning a mail to the Debian IATN mailing list, which I suppose everybody around this supply to. And well, the main point is to see if these release goals are acceptable for at least all of us and if we can think of other release goals around IATN. And of course, any other topic that may come. The main point being here is to decide how we will do that. I propose a kind of daily work session. Would that be okay for everybody around? Of course, we are like 20 people around, but three other people are welcome and we could just sit down at some place. It will be hard to schedule because the schedule is already done, so we may switch from time to time. But I would like to have it at the same hour daily. Does that fit with your schedules, guys?
Do we all have an hour that works that doesn't put other talks?
It necessary conflicts somewhere, I think.
There is no space. Yesterday, we rechecked during the org team meeting. There is always more than one hour used.
After the dinner.
Well, can you just pick a time then? And obviously, not everybody will make it every day.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. We should do this. Or do this during the lunchtime?
Hard to do because people need to eat.
Okay.
Do you think like, how many hours are you thinking of? Two, three, four, together?
Well, one hour I think is too short.
Two, two.
Two would be good and then three hours you will be bored.
I think we meet at lunch and then we...
I was thinking about 10 to 12.
After dinner? During the evening?
So usually evening, we don't have talks, only boss.
We are only boss in the evening?
Usually after dinner, we only have boss, usually.
So we could imagine using one of the talkrooms. Why not?
I'm not with my notebook, so I can check that. But it's possible. The lower talkroom looks very nice.
Yeah, the lower one seems to be nicer than the upper one. I think easier for small group.
If somebody has access, check, not on Penta, but on Gennet website. This is the updated version.
And there are two versions, private one and official one.
Should be everything on Penta, but Penta sometimes doesn't answer as we would like.
But as far as I see, there is nothing after 6:00 in the various talkrooms.
I thought the nights were free for perfecting, so...
Yeah, there are boards. SPI meeting tomorrow.
I don't know if it's possible, but it would be great to know the topic of each day.
Each day. Actually, I have no topic. It's up to us to build a topic. So we can set it up once now. That could be a good point. We have, okay, we are Sunday, so we can say there could be some, an event tonight, why not? Monday, Tuesday, nothing Wednesday because, well, we could have one. No, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We can have at least seven meetings.
Thursday weekend. Thursday is the same.
Ah, it's the same, so no Thursday. So having one Wednesday would be nice. And that would make six if we include Saturday.
Yeah, a lot of people is leaving during Saturday afternoon. See when people start.
So well, at least five. Five of two hours is already quite good. Would it be okay for 8:00? 8:00 PM?
8:10, yes.
Even earlier if we want.
I have team meeting after organization 7:00.
When? At 7:00?
At 7:00, after dinner.
So 8:00 would be good for you?
Yeah.
8:00 is fine, so okay. Let's decide for 8:00. And...
Is this in the Penta box?
I'm sorry.
You can enter this in the Penta box?
No. Enter? Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, I can add this to the...
Yeah, I talked to Mark Hyman and I said to him who would schedule a daily meeting and I come back to him after this discussion. So daily, day 8:00 in the lower talkroom. Everybody knows where the lower talkroom is?
Follow the signs.
You just go down.
Yeah, tonight there's already...
Follow the signs.
Tonight, there's already a meeting in the lower talkroom, at SPI board meeting.
No, it's not in the lower. It's in the lower box. Am I right?
It's in the basement talkroom.
Basement talk for the SPI?
Yes. Well, is this Penta or is this yours?
This is yours.
Okay.
Maybe we can define a meeting place and then try to find a place where we can talk together.
SPI meeting is tomorrow. It's tomorrow, but it's in the basement talkroom. So we will move for tomorrow. We can do it in the lower box. I'll see that with Mark Hyman. Okay, so 8:00, starting tonight. We can do it tonight. Okay, everybody was awakened. I think a schedule, as Luciano say, would be good. So say, okay, tonight we will work on this, that, etc., etc.
I think that will be make effective meetings because maybe I'm just interested in the technical part and then the...
Yeah, I think it would be better to just, more than just say, okay, come and sit down and we'll talk.
Probably we can try like Extremadura, like we did in Extremadura, some schedules of people then.
With the same rules, laptops forbidden?
Yep.
No, I won't do it.
You want your laptop. You want your laptop.
I want my laptop, not yours.
No, laptop is yours.
Ah, okay. Laptop will be okay. It's up to you guys to use it for us. What would be good for tonight, maybe first start on the release goals. I think this is probably what's expected by the release team, so...
Michael also sent a message about release goal, right?
What?
Luzu sent a message to Debian release to have...
Yeah, Grisu sent one and Nicolas also sent one in Debian IATN. So it's basically the same release goals that... Yeah, Grisu sent about DDP, package description stuff and Nicolas gave a few more ID which are interesting to discuss. So that's good. I think, would you be okay for tonight, say the release goals for IATN?
Yes.
My only wish for the next ones could be Puto and Suro stuff at some moment.
Yes, basically, we have a lot of structure. We don't have much space, but we have space for room for people to do stuff over there. So there, one of the things that I'm going to do during this week on DEPCOT is actually update the wiki of IATN to have all the info, how we get an account, how we get access, what's available and stuff. And we will lock that wiki to not have duplicated documentation. It's just for administration purpose, just for info. The rest of the info should be on the Debian wiki.
On the Debian wiki. IATN doc on the Debian wiki, Suro admin on the Suro wiki. That's good. We could set a small summary for tomorrow, for Monday. Just have you maybe do a oral presentation on what we have.
Sure, I can do that.
Maybe Nicolas can talk about what is running. And Eddy also, your companion staff on Suro. I will show the various things that we import currently in Puto.
Do you do the part of Thomas then? Do you talk about Thomas or do you want me to talk about Thomas?
You probably know Thomas part better more than me. And we keep space for a summary of what would be needed for importing Grisu's work.
Yes, I still have the reports from Extremadura about how scary is importing DDPs.
Sorry.
Well, it's just for everybody knows because almost nobody knows. We could only import one language for the whole DDP and Puto stop working. And we have like 27.
It's much better now.
Yeah, I think that Puto is much better now. Nicolas did an awful job of Puto's people. So I think what we could also decide is to force you to upgrade Puto and package the last Puto version.
Yes, and upload it.
And upload it, but I can upload.
The version in testing is newer than the version in Edge, the version in Lenny. Because then I can just backwork it.
I don't think so, but the package for the new version is done. I'm just thinking about packaging the next one. Because it should come quite early, but Christian wants this one, so...
I think we need something that's Puto 1.0.0 and if we, it would be too bad to wait for Puto 1.0.1. Okay, it will be better than 1.0.0.
Because I can just upload your backports for you too.
The performances of Puto 1.0 should be checked.
Should be checked.
Yes.
Okay.
But when should you check it?
It wasn't tested on a server with 20,000 of Po5.
We have one?
Yes.
We have one. So yeah, that could be the second part, second part of the... So, yeah, that could be the second part, second part of the.
Idea under system. Yeah, we can use one, two more.
Okay.
Maybe we can buy a bigger hard drive too.
So actually, it would be good if we have the new bootall by tomorrow. Okay.
Yes, that.
But we are not. We don't have to wait for you to officially release the bootall package in the archive. You can just build one for.
It already exists.
Okay, so you give it to Philippe.
Yes, just find the NRC and I'll install.
Okay, so that gives us a kind of bootall session on on Monday?
Sure.
I'm not sure we will be able to work on DDT stuff at the same time. We need to save space for specific DDP work.
I don't know if there is much DDP work to do.
I think that we should have Grisu reintroduce all of us with how the DDP works currently.
Our hidden, our secret plans for the future is having an IITN dot Debian dot org, which will be in bootall and the DDP on that server. So that's one of the things that we have in mind, like having our 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 infrastructure over there.
Yes. Yeah, so we we know, we are.
I'd like to switch all the translation and all the stuff to bootall and shut down my own server for this.
Yeah. What we need to find is the bridge between the two, the two ways to work the current DDP that some teams already use.
Yeah, they are using the DDSS.
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 Yeah.
DTPS.
So, and they use it well, they are now used to it. So we need to, a small summary by you, if you can, just informal summary of how is the DDP now, what it is doing and what is the DDSS and so on. And how do you produce PO5s currently? And then we'll see how we can import. That could be on Tuesday?
Have we some whiteboard or something like this?
Some?
Some whiteboard, two whites.
A whiteboard, I didn't saw only only screen, only screens and projectors, but whiteboards I didn't saw.
Okay.
I would try to find a fifth chart.
Oh, fifth chart, yes.
But not chart as well, if we have.
It's hard to explore, to say all the things. I must prepare some style.
Wednesday, Wednesday is the tourist day, so do we plan something that day? Will everybody come if we have a meeting at eight? PM?
Okay. The the place is open?
The place is open anyway, so we can use. I, I would be there. Anyway, it will rain, so. You don't have to go outside. It's a boring city, you don't have.
I think maybe, maybe most people will come back to have the sponsored food.
Yeah, I think so. So I think that eight should be okay. So, okay, eight, Wednesday. What do we do?
Well, we're talking about Shuro, bootall, DDP.
Release goals.
Release goals already.
Yeah, we we need probably to save the last meetings for.
Conclusions?
Well, maybe conclusions or things we don't have, we didn't have time enough to discuss.
One of the things that probably you should address, that is not addressed or should be addressed in the bootall is the license again, license of contribution.
For translations.
That's, I mean, we will have the infrastructure, we don't have it, but we also didn't write like a couple of lines of policy to say that you should license your translations, to be clear. It's not a long thing, it's just a short guideline. I'm doing that in Brazilian Portuguese, but it's. Another thing that I would like to discuss and I don't have, I don't know if we have much room for that, is the website. Because we started changing a few bits of it and we start. We are preparing now, if I don't, I didn't find Grisu yet, but I will try to find him. Because Dom is checking the licensing and I'm checking the WML structure because we want to move it for a new website or new phase and all that. But without all the hype of mockups and publish. But I would like to hear with the translators how the WML is important if, how we can change things without breaking everything.
So translation licensing, websites, website documentation, does it fit together?
Awesome.
Also, I think Javier Fernandez is not here, but he will come probably at the next sessions and he would be interested if we have some discussion about documentation.
Yeah, because we are using several types of documentation now, like Debian doc in some parts, docbook XML in other parts and probably.
And sometimes it's translated with PO5s, sometimes it isn't. So it's not very consistent all over Debian documentation project, I think. So that would be a lot for Wednesday, I think.
I mean, the website is just as small, it's not.
So the point is not really to present again what to do. I think we are more or less aware of these things, but to change ideas again.
To change, try to find a way to.
Try to find a way to. Realistic goals, because we all have big ideas and we never achieve all of them.
Have some app maintainers on that call?
Uh, he should, he should be here, yeah.
Maybe we should take one session with app maintainers to discuss the goals that Nicolas had in his email because of the TDEPs, translation DEPs.
That was, yeah, that this is something.
It's a big goal and I think we should put together the translator and the release managers and the app maintainers.
Yeah, the things about TDEPs. Let's let's call this TDEPs all one, even if TDEPs are not a good idea, I don't know. But because I remember the discussions between Eddie, Javier in the Extremadura. We have a good summary. I went on it recently, you did work it, yeah. And we have a good summary on the wiki about this TDEPs with very good ideas. And someone was talking.
I've talked yesterday with Wookiee.
Yeah, with Wookiee.
And we kind of rethought the whole idea. And the problem with with TDEPs is that it increases really, really very, in a very large scale, a number of packages, actually. You have, as it proposed, as it is proposed now, it would actually create one supplemental package for every pair of package. So actually, for every package, you have as many supplemental packages as translations. So that that would be huge. And on the other hand, what I've talked with Wookiee was that maybe we should instead try to implement what Scott James Remland suggested a while back, I think, three or four years ago, when when he talked about the PKG2 and creating some kind of classes of files within every every Debian package. So you actually use some classification and you use some filters on those class of files. So on a default system, you would actually install everything as you would usually. But if you want to have a custom thing, then you would actually unfilter. So you actually say, okay, these are, these are Romanian translations, so I want all Romanian is translation installed. Everything else, every other translation, drop it.
This is basically the idea of Ubuntu localization packages, am I wrong?
I think you obviously are also looking at this, relating that the packages can be updated separately. This is the same idea of marking packets like config files inside the end, so it should be like removable files or.
Yeah, something like that. So actually, you would have something like classify, classify types of files. You have main pages, you have documentation or abstract classes like this.
Yeah, it could be used for more things than just localization.
Yes, that's why.
All this set slash doc stuff, slash dev stuff. You can make one library package, just have the own library and separate the documentation, separate the dev files, separate the translation files.
This way, we can work on, during, on the same infrastructure with with the Debian people.
So definitely, we need a session for this, right?
Yes.
Okay, we buy one. We are Friday.
I'm, I'm not sure, but maybe, I think Wookiee schedules some meeting, I'm not sure when.
Okay, can you coordinate with Wookiee to?
I'm going to go there anyway.
Yeah, but so that we don't collide or do the same thing in in two different sessions. So, okay, the responsible for this session is me. The one for.
We need to check with Michael Vortig.
Yeah, we need to bring Michael what, Mike? Michael, Michael? How do you pronounce Michael in German?
Michael.
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 Michael and not Michael Schumacher.
No, no.
Ah!
Michael.
Michael Schumacher. So Michael Vortig, so we should bring him at this. Anyway, I think he will be interested in most of the things, even if we say bad words about Rosetta in some places. And say that bootall is better and like. Okay, so, yeah, it would be nice to have someone feeling more in charge for each session. So Eddie has been nominated for Friday about TDEPs and the light.
No, maybe as a volunteer.
Yeah, I did. For Wednesday, Felipe is nominated. Yeah, everybody, okay?
Yeah, after this meeting ends, you should send this note to the listing.
And.
You're volunteer, probably.
For the summary, I volunteer. Thank you, yes. For writing long and stupid boring mails, I always volunteer. Bootall, yeah, the bootall session could be, who could manage the bootall session?
Nicola.
Nicola, yeah, good idea. Nicola is okay for the bootall session. And the release goals, Luke, of course. And, okay, we have release goals for Sunday, for Monday with bootall. Everybody summarize what we already do on bootall, fine, so.
Sure, it's also Monday or.
And a more technical session about DDP, DDSS, how to import DDP to bootall could be on Tuesday. It's good, I think, to have it early because afterwards, we will want to work, to do technical work between probably Felipe, Grisu, Nicola, I won't do any technical work and you'll just crack the shelves quickly. Maybe some guys will review mine.
You list your homework and then you do.
Okay, for that part, that DDP stuff, we nominate Grisu as responsible. Just move the things, not the only one to speak. And we can save for the people who are still here on Saturday, a kind of summary. Maybe we can schedule it earlier.
It should be in the morning.
In the morning?
Yes, it's for people.
Waving at the.
Hmm?
I'm waving at the.
Okay, okay, fine.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving on Friday.
You're leaving on Friday, you, sorry?
It's like the flight was three hundred dollars more cheaper.
Okay, you don't stack. You saved Debian's money. Okay, so, well, a small on Saturday, if we can, would be good. When is to summarize?
When is scheduled the the presentation of Shuro?
Shuro is on Monday to get rid of bootall or?
Yeah, Shuro, Shuro, I would call it a presentation on.
Yes, presentation of the various services or.
Yeah, what what we are already doing on Shuro is on Monday.
Okay.
Just before the cheese party. We have a collision here. Because the cheese party organizers are here, so. The cheese party is at the ten.
On Monday?
On Monday. And of course, all internationalization people are deep cheese lovers, so if you remember Extremadura.
Yeah, Karunakar with the.
They could, they could clean the room, but the cheese is, I think so.
They demolished it.
Two weeks later.
And I remember his face.
He wants this mailing.
I I put a picture, will be after eating that, that cheese on my blog, so you can, you can enjoy it every time you want.
We need to review projects, me talking about them.
Say words about it, because it's, after all, it's all about English localization, so. It's, we can.
And we, and the release goals, we would discuss the NMU campaign.
And NMU campaign, ah, interesting, yes, do I have any statistics of it?
Okay, already. No, I I completely suck at keeping statistics or information. I just do the work and. No, I have no idea. I think it was successful.
At really the the last week of the.
Yeah, because Nicolas did set up something.
But this year you have, right, it has been generally.
Yeah, it's working now.
Yes, now it's working every day, so we we will have the graphs.
After one year, we have nice.
But we we only have.
This year, this year you share the load of the NMU campaign.
I could be nice, yes, very much appreciated, yes. And this way, you could work to have Brazilian Portuguese one hundred persons.
Oh, it's right.
We are no longer one hundred person, I'm afraid. And thanks to the Smith Review Project, I think the statistics are low.
And shall we, shall we talk about fonts or input methods?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Maybe the interaction with the two teams and, but, 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 I mean, could be part of the release concept, I guess.
Yeah, the the point is, well, this font packaging team, I launched it without knowing anything about fonts.
But it's brought great results, I think.
Okay, it's working and we have now the, well, the load is slowly taken by Nicolas, so I will rest and sleep. And, yes, there are a lot of things to do about font stuff and interaction. I don't know if we have still room to talk about that.
Because maybe, I think, is there a policy on what translators are are using? I mean, let's say a new translator wants to use bootall, is there going to be a recommendation on a particular font to use or particular input methods? Or is the CSS in the in bootall itself going to have fallback for other fonts or?
I think the, there may be something defined like that. I think the the bootall guys are trying to to gather some information about various languages. What is the the preferred font, the preferred size and all the stuff like.
That's very crucial information.
Is it possible to to underline some some text or just in some languages, if you underline the the text, just not readable, so you have to to use another trick.
Sometimes there are sizes and sometimes you you need to have the browser also understand some languages, there there are some rendering issues sometimes.
So I'm pretty sure there there are a rare about the problem. I don't know how it is implemented in the bootall server. Because it's more the the word for guy who work in that.
I've met him, I've discussed a little bit at the OpenOffice conference in Lyon. But maybe that could be an item on the, on the, on the teams to the list. To see, I mean, Christian, you showed me the the page in the wiki where there are the lists of recommended fonts or fonts being used in the installer. But would it be useful to have like a, a big poll?
but, um, would it be useful to have like a, um, a big poll among the translators, asking for their, their input? I, I prefer this font because it works better for that and maybe have that in the, in the same wiki page, I think, that would be useful. And also for the, for the font maintaining, uh, maintaining team to kind of identify which fonts would be most usefully packaged or if there are fonts that are restricted, then maybe contacting the upstream that is saying, okay, it would be great if we could have.
This kind of overlaps with the font choosing procedure in Debian installer or the graphical installer, I probably.
The, the, the page Nicola were talking about is the page about Guay fonts maintained by David Evidi.
Ah.
And so, uh, yeah, we have to be careful about not overlapping, but David is already involved in the package.
He's very in the, in the.
And so that, I don't think it, it would overlap. Actually, me being in the, in the font is kind of, uh, an attempt to avoid forking efforts. So, yeah, there are, there are, there's a lot of things to do, uh, there has been a discussion recently on the package fonts about, uh, the various fonts for Chinese language and Chinese related languages, because there are some complex issues, I don't understand anything at, about, uh, this stuff.
There are technical issues as well as, as legal, um, and as in issues, but, uh, I think it would be useful to, to be able to identify where, where the work should happen and, but, I mean, maybe it's, it's a different kind of use case, maybe the, the fonts that you would use that are best for the installer might not be the fonts that you use on your browser when the system is installed or the fonts that you use to print.
Relate me to the installer, because when you choose to install, say, in, uh, in Japanese, you want the best for Japanese, so there, this is related to tasks, uh, to the localization tasks, what to install, uh, every.
This installation with the two localization config doesn't?
Uh, I, I think personally that localization config is dead. Uh, the point of this package for those who don't know about it was to, uh, to the final steps of localization, but it touches every package configuration file, so by definition it's completely policy broken. So, it should be R C, it should not be in testing, and it is not, if I remember. We filed a R C bug at the end of H wheel cycle about it. It seems that the Debian Edu people are still interested in it, but I, I think after, I, I maintained it for a while, it's not necessarily the correct approach to, to, to configure other packages according to localization. We better have this package behave properly to have G D M respect the local settings, et cetera. So, no, I'm not sure it's related to localization.
I thought because it goes separate the four forms.
It's closer to task cell and these things, I think, and finding the right fonts to incorporate in a given localization task is very, very difficult, actually. Especially for complex languages, not, not, not Latin languages, actually.
From, from the translators and from the people in the communities that use these languages, I think they are the, the best people to, to give us that kind of information, because even the, the best designers won't know, uh, the, uh, the, the right consistency or the, the way a particular, particular script should appear. You have to ask the people we know, I mean, that's obvious, but maybe setting up a project.
And apparently on this issue, uh, the, the efforts with, uh, are more or less joined with Ubuntu people.
Yeah, on the Ubuntu side, there, there's also a review going on, yeah.
Some of them joined the font packaging team recently and Matzimerman launched a discussion about font and the, the big mess of fonts in Debian and Ubuntu also.
The future of the format and, and all that, yes.
Yeah.
But, um, it reminds me that Michael Vok, Michael.
Michael Vok.
Alright. Um, I had, um, uh, had a script also, uh, to do font config configuration, especially for C G K languages, so not exactly look like, uh, config, but an approach that would just touch the font config configuration according to the account, especially for complex scripts and.
And this is, yeah, this is something I, I, yeah, what you were, you mentioned when you introduced yourself, this is something we might need more inputs for, from the communities of, especially in the C G K languages communities, because, uh, the knowledge is, uh, is somewhat rare in the.
It's really distributed, yeah.
Yeah, actually I was just talking to the people in Taiwan and they'll be interested in participating in your working sessions, but, um, it is, in the evening, it's a bit late for them, it's like three P M, three A M in the morning. So, if you are going to have this font and implemented, uh, working session, maybe you can arrange it.
In the morning?
Need day, we buy, need day or early afternoon, it would be great for them.
That would be nice also for the people working on input methods, uh, in South Asia and India or surrounding countries.
Maybe you like work here on I R C or something like that.
Well, in Extremadura, we had Karunaka, uh, who's one of the really specialist of input methods, so, uh, we need to involve all the, all these people. The difficult part is to follow what is explaining, because it takes.
It's really tricky.
It's hard, but they do a tremendous job, this, this part, and we need a lot of people involved in the old complex languages, all the B D stuff. We discovered recently broken stuff in D I, but we, we never noticed, Balush, Balush reported, but. Yeah, that, that's also a challenge, because, uh, I think the main challenge for Debian or all open source, so-called open source, uh, stuff is, uh, lies in, in Asia, in Africa.
Complex scripts.
The war is already lost in Europe anyway, so.
Yes, there are so many items, uh, in, in the stack, I mean, from the input method to the, to the font, to the, to the rendering. Some things need to work together, uh, it's, it's quite important, yeah, and there are tons of languages.
Oh, this is the Ethnolog website.
Tons of.
You guys all know about the Ethnolog website?
Yeah.
The bible for the people working on I T, you know? Okay, someone comes with a strange language and you see.
You have the entries and statistics and numbers and things.
Yeah. I spent a whole day in Ethnolog, probably.
Yeah. There, there are projects also to, to kind of create the same, uh, database, uh, uh, big database of writing systems. So, this is for languages and, uh, where they're spoken, what family they belong to and so on. Uh, but we, S I L, um, and people contributing, and like me, would, um, are working on, on setting up the same for writing systems, so you'd have an entry also, uh, like the font, the recommended font for that language, the recommended writing system, so also kind of a source forge for writing systems, but it's, it's still in the works. I'll, I'll, I'll mention, uh, some of the work done in that area at the fonts.
You should keep some time to talk about S I L specifically.
It's, it's not really about S I L, it's what S I L wants to do, but.
It fits, uh, the Debian philosophy, I think.
Yeah.
Well, okay, no.
Okay, so you guys are all okay for I T nine sessions in the evenings? Yeah, good. And Nicola will package Puto in two hours. And we will have it on Churro. I, I just checked this morning and Churro was completely dead, Puto server was not working and no one noticed.
Really?
I just had to restart them.
The Puto server or the Churro?
Uh, the Puto server.
Oh, okay.
Just connected on, uh, port eighty eight.
Do you want to have something, check me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sure, I didn't know.
You should have. You're the admin, I'm the user.
So, if you're interested, I'll get some.
Five five from here. We should plan to have, uh, if that's possible, uh, an Extremadura meeting again. I think it would help us to advance again on all these things and maybe focus it on a specific program. I think that advancing on Puto would be a good target and very specific meeting with a few involved people would be nice.
Do you?
So, we need to, to keep this in mind and to see with, I had in mind to make it at the end of the year.
But it will happen this year again, is that right? It's already.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that, if we, if you're not aware, we reported about the meetings, all the Extremadura meetings, reported them in February, the, uh.
Free software war conference.
So, all the six meet, Debian meetings were presented and.
If it's in December, it would be a good time to see what's the status of the release goals and if there are new release.
It fits the, it fits the release, uh, schedule, yes? So, targeting something in late November, December or something would be a good. Okay, so we, we keep time for, for this, at least at the final meeting. Okay, you're free.
That's good.
Great, thanks.